Seven o'clock. Thirty-seven, let's we shall begin the meeting.
Commissioner Schneider?
Here.
Commissioner Bolt?
Here.
Commissioner Fink? Commissioner Headstrom?
Here.
Commissioner Griffiths?
Eric.
Commissioner Wolf is out. Commissioner Barrett?
Here.
Do you have a quorum?
We will move on to pervert of the minute for our meeting on August twenty-third. Changes that would like be made?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to propose an amendment of two minutes to make sure we adequately cover the last item that we discussed. And that was Commissioner Headstrom had noted an update with the language from address to be replaced with in such times usage rules and regulations are fully completed and finalized in the Dickerson County zoning code.
Okay, and I was actually going to say the same thing.
Okay.
I appreciate your view there.
I brought up a proposed, you know, addition if if you wanna take a look at that.
Yeah, I'm impressed, actually.
Sure, absolutely.
And 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 my question is gonna be, I think it's the second meeting in a row we talked about that as a as a topic that we wanted to try to add. And not that it has to be done today or anything, but I think it was the second meeting in a row we talked about it. And then I didn't see a reference in here, so I could say if you bring that up.
I'm gonna follow up with you guys tonight on that.
Okay.
I didn't list it on the agenda, but I that's what I'm saying, I didn't see it on the agenda. But I will follow up with you under miscellaneous on that.
Okay.
So that would be my motion to amend the minutes with the paragraph written there on the paper that everyone's reviewing.
Second amendment, if that needs to be done.
Commissioner Barrett, I I would like to add a word to regulations are fully completed. No, I'm sorry, I I we're talking of the regulations here, correct?
Correct.
Not the application?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and this was in reference to applications will not be reviewed until, not just addressed, until every.
Until the regulation won't be accepted or reviewed until all regulations are completed for whatever that topic is. So between hydrogen, solar.
Right, whatever.
So you don't get the same thing that last time where even an application will not be completed, our hands were tied, we were locked, we couldn't do anything.
And and the word that I wanted to want to use on the application is that it's complete and accurate. That'd be important. And I and and I thought we were talking about the application, but not. We're talking about the regulation on that. So at the time we've been reviewing application, the word accurate, I think, will be very important for us. Complete and accurate. Right? I'm good with that motion. Do we need a motion to amend those minutes? You can approve the approve with the amendments, so. And I would second that.
Second, second to approve the amendment we added to the minutes from last week's or sorry, last month's meeting. All in favor, raise your hand. All post the same sign, motion passed. Is there any more amendments that anyone would like to make to the minutes from last month? If not, we have a motion to approve the minutes?
I would like to make that motion.
Second, this is moving second to approve the minutes of last month including the amendment that had previously been approved. All in favor, please raise your right hand. All post the same sign. Motion passed. Then we'll move on to due business, which is CUP twenty-five dash oh three, consideration of a conditional use permit to allow establishment of an agricultural seed retailer generally located in section twenty-four, township thirteen S, range one E, at the request of Dr. Seed Company. The Dr. D R C. D R C Company, I'm sorry. That will.
Very good to you. Okay, this is the applicant proposing a retail seed, retail sale of seed and other ag-related products for the area farms. There are two principal structures on the properties on your site plan that I submitted. One is a thirty-eight by seventy-foot shed and the other one is a forty by one-hundred-foot accessory structure as well. Checking the parking area designation on the site plan, and it is in accordance with Article sixteen regarding parking for retail establishment. Currently, there's no address assigned to this property. And so probably one of the conditions of this is to get apartments assigned. Although this lot is adjacent to residential uses, this area does have a mix of uses which have been present a number of years. Public comments, staff has not received any comments from the public expressing opposition to this use as of the date today. Comments from other departments, staff did contact Lincoln Township for comment, but no concerns over the proposal were expressed. The review criteria, item A, approval of this conditional use will not be contrary to the intent and purpose of these regulations. This is a moderate impact retail use on a parcel currently utilized. There's a low impact partial storage use. The area within the vicinity is of this parcel was has established land uses. It have been present for at least thirty years with no appreciable increase in development or change. The item B, the land use pattern for this area is consistent with other areas within the county that are near incorporated cities such as Abilene. The planning commission has approved similar uses in the past in areas with a similar land use pattern. Item C, no transportation and service facilities may be impacted with this proposal. And his access to the property is on Eden Road. No appreciable increase, heavy truck traffic is anticipated on this site. Item D, no changes have occurred in this area that would facilitate this use. However, ag-related retail sales are vital to the economic sustainability of the community. Item E, the current commercial related use on the subject property has been in existence for at least since at least twenty twenty-three. Item F, this property contains approximately three acres. This acreage is sufficient to allow for a limited impact commercial use. This property has sufficient infrastructure serving it and no topographic limitations. Item G will be discussed shortly. Item H, the subject parcel is located within an area designated on the future land use map as suitable for development, which means the infrastructure required to support such facility is present. Item I is the health, safety, and general welfare of the public and surrounding properties may not be impacted by this proposed use. Since it would be a moderate impact. Item J, staff has concluded there will be no adverse impact based on on items A through I above. Currently, there are no other factors with the exception of those discussed herein. Staff was considered. Staff is recommending approval of the conditional use permit with the conditions that any outdoor lighting attached to the building and related to the commercial use be shielded or aimed away from any adjacent residential uses. Driveway entrance lights are allowed. Item two is addressed to be assigned based on location of the main entrance. Yeah, item three is just consult with environmental services on the status of the existing septic to ensure that the size is appropriate for a retail use. The alternatives would be recommend approval of the request with any conditions that's listed with the conditions that's listed above or any additional conditions as being necessary by the commission or recommend denial of the request. With that, the site plan was submitted. I also submitted a couple of aerial photographs. And one of those is highlighted in blue to show you the the actual parcel. And the second one is not highlighted in blue, but you can see the the existence of a of that one trailer or that one building to the on the close to the south property line there under the trees to give you an idea of where the one of the structures is located. The with that, the applicant is here and answer any questions for him.
We just run him up now?
Yeah.
Okay, so you wanna just come up and say your name and give us your address as well?
I'm here in Rockville, I'm out of a suburb in Kansas. Zerry and I, we've established a seed company, sell mustn't seed, corn, soybeans, wheat, we're also gonna do plant C C in grass, mixed grasses.
Do I see that the main entrance is going to be off of Eden and not off of Highway forty? Is that correct?
Yeah, as of now, yes. We had discussed earlier that maybe we do get access off the highway, but there's some drainage issues, I think, would be the major concern pushing water onto the neighborhood property to the east. And just as long as we can come in off to Eden for now, we might pursue that later, but it's not a concern for us. It's not a concern. This can that Vegas pretty steep, so.
My only thing would be is if if they did, that would be a permitted request off of Highway forty, it would go through Roden Bridge.
That's correct.
Just so that that would be included in that.
Okay.
Would be if it would go off of Highway forty.
Okay.
And that that would be the the way it would go, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
Would be through Roden Bridge.
Yeah, Roden Bridge and probably forty, I don't know if old forty is still maintained by KDOT or not, but if it's not, then it would be Roden Bridge.
Mark Kinnerknecht is the owner of the property? What was he using it for? What was it used for?
He had a construction, or he did concrete.
Right.
He just had his tools there.
Okay, so it was just a storage for him?
Yeah, as far as I could tell, he wasn't in the forty-five either. I think it's just maybe just a little repair shop storage. Thirty-eight by seventy, it just had some boards and doors and tools and stuff like that.
Construction stuff?
Yeah.
Stuff. Got it, got it. And Tim, you're saying the infrastructure is there. So is there a sewer, is there water service?
There's an existing septic on there. I think that there is public water, am I correct? Yeah, it's served by public water.
The subject tank is there, but it's not, it's hooked up in the lateral.
It's it's fairly new, isn't it?
Yeah, I think it's been a year.
Yeah, okay.
I think city water runs to Red, I got that for you.
Yeah. Well, that would make that would make sense, and so then you would have city water.
No, sorry, there that that property is ran off a well. There's the city water goes by, but.
But you're on a well?
Yeah, it's on a well.
Oh, that'll be cheaper for you.
Yeah.
I'm on real water.
I guess I'm not crazy about maintaining a well, so.
Or is a well from the septic, is sure.
I think it's about, I would say about fifty, sixty feet.
Yeah, it meets whatever the I think it meets the requirements because I remember environmental saying that it met. Because it's it was brand new and I think you they Mark went through environmental services for it.
So there was a permit for that?
Yeah.
For septic?
Yeah, it means I think it meets that requirement for the separation.
I I I just thought it was like a hundred hundred feet or something.
I just always think it was a hundred feet from the.
And I I should be wrong, I mean.
They've changed it since.
Three acres are minimum size. And you know, hundred feet is quite a distance over three acres.
I think they just changed it within the past.
Where's that at in the rules and rights, Tim? Where it says that that's the minimum?
The mid, well, that would be under the environmental.
Yeah.
I don't have access to that. Well, not right now.
They just changed it within the past two, three years.
Yeah.
Go less. But I think that recently, I don't know if it might be in there, but does that tank got like an aerator system on it and things? Because I think they have that to deal with. Sand springs, if you use a tank, it has to be a certain way to keep the nitrates from getting in the water because it's still very well, the well, the water well water is so good up in there that I don't. It's not very, very.
And and you can check also with environmental services too. They'll have the documentation as well.
So so will there be a environmental services? I'm not sure what's the right word, a certificate or approval that says, yeah, the the minimum feet has been reached and you know, if they put septic or ground perks or you know, whatever.
If they've issued him a permit, then that's the approval.
Okay, yeah, permit.
And he's then that they would have that on file over there. Mark probably pulled it when he had that building built, so. Or when the when the building's built. So it's probably was pulled. He went to, I can confirm it. Whether they they've got a permit or not, I can call environmental services and verify it, but I'm pretty sure they've got a permit on.
Yeah, I don't wanna hold it up when I'm pro-business, but I just wanna know, you know, where are we at on that? I just wanna know.
Yes.
You know. So Tim, i- is there a database? Was there a prior CUP?
No prior CUP on that property. Usually what we do is for something that's like a unless he was receiving customers and you know, a lot of times people will use that, use a lot and build something there and they'll know that there's something unless somebody brings us brings it to our attention that, okay, well, yeah, he's just storing stuff over there. Or if if it's for, you know, commercial, specifically for commercial use, receiving commercial, you know, people coming in and out for customers. It's sort of similar to what went on that with the, I can't remember the the guy upon North Buckeye. The truck.
Had to be along that.
Similar to that where we we caught a we 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 found out that there was gonna be a somebody wanting to put something new in there or there a change in the in the use and then that's what can we don't catch is the CUP for that particular law.
Would there have been a building permit pulled?
Yes, and usually a building permit for something like that would be for an accessory structure for for just first hand, that will specify to storage. They say storage for.
I mean, I I I welcome the the, I mean, this fits into our land use as far as agriculture. So I welcome what what these people are proposing. I was just curious about prior use to that.
Yeah.
What's your what's your timeline for it? Will you have to begin to do do the work and develop it for your location?
I think was closing day. I think the closing day was maybe October two.
You say closing day?
Yeah.
To where you would actually own it?
Correct.
Okay, so you're you're thirty days-ish of owning it. And then what would your timeline be to to begin to, you know, build it out the way you want it?
Well, our first year, I can see, you know, as a as a first year program, so. But I see like maybe two years will be at, you know, probably sixty percent or what to do. Uh, it kind of depends with the farming economy.
Sure.
Kind of time to be there now, but on this so far, so. That that's by projection this year and maybe year number two, whether it's sixty percent or maybe eighty percent. I just believe that'd be sort of number all. That's where I'd like to.
Yeah, okay. Part of the reason I was asking that is I just wanted to know, Tim, you said you would get ahold of environmental services?
Yeah.
And you you checked for a building permit, you checked for a.
Well, yeah. Septic, septic permits.
Septic permit.
Yep.
And and all I was thinking about was if it's not per code, then we would just need a variance on it?
Yeah, they could apply for a variance.
And that's why I'm wondering, I'm just wanting to be sure that, yeah, I know you've got time. If if Tim does his homework, comes back, that it's not, it's not as per rules and rights, then we just need a variance and just wondering if you had time to come back next month, you know, for a variance.
That's why I've got like number three. I mean, it wouldn't be a variance from you guys, it would be a variance from the environmental code.
Administrative.
Yeah, from the environmental code. This is why I've got on number three for the recommendations to consult with environmental services on the status of the septic. You can also check to make sure that the setbacks are right too, and they can let you know.
Like this property can be, I would say it's gonna be more of a warehouse instead of everyday multiple guys coming in. You know, a dozen farmers a week, maybe during during the peak season. But it's mostly gonna just be a warehouse.
It's so, you'll be selling seed and other ag-related products. What other products are you looking to carry?
The the grasses.
Okay.
Mainly.
Okay.
Did you have any input on?
Herbicides or anything on this and?
Just family, everything was.
Okay.
Fuel tanks? Again, somebody mentioned sand and springs area and I'm guessing that water table's pretty close out there. You know, like the most recent well we're here was hundred and eighty feet. Yes, and that's.
Yeah, a lot of us.
Yeah.
Got it, I got it very deep up there.
Yeah.
Maybe it's fifty foot, so I checked. If the minimum is fifty feet.
Okay.
Do we have any more questions for the applicant? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Now we will open it to the public. Okay, all right, we'll open the hearing to the public. I would like to address everyone. The public is invited to speak to the board during the full hearing portion hearing portion of any item under discussion. Please raise your hand after being recognized, give your name and address, proceed with your questions and comments. Shortly after the applicant presents his case, the planning commission may ask questions of the applicant. The board will discuss those answers. After the board rests, the chair will invite comments from interested persons for against for neutral. The board will conduct discussion and take action if possible. Citizens are asked to leave any remarks. Please do not repeat comments already made by previous speakers. In the timeframe, please limit your remarks to clear and concise statements. The chairman may have to put a time limit on number if the number of speakers comes too much. The board will attempt to be fair and flexible and to ensure all those that are interested are heard. All zoning changes, conditional uses, and subdivision proposals will go from this board to the county commissioners with recommendation of approval or denial. All issues heard this evening will go to the county commission after the fourteenth day of fourteen-day appeal period if applicable. Should you be interested in attending the zone the meeting, please contact the zoning administrator or county clerk for a schedule here date and time. If you wish to file a protest petition, please contact the zoning administrator for the form, forms needed. The zoning administrator will explain the petition processing. I mean, your input is always appreciated.
And just and just to let the public also know that this and the applicant as well, that this is gonna be scheduled after today. It's gonna if a protest petition is filed within fourteen days, we're looking at the second of October for the county commissioners. And that's just to kind of let everybody know. And then if you wanna, anybody that wants to file a protest petition, just like the chairman said, just come to visit with me and I'll provide you the the documentation.
What's that public comment is okay?
Okay. My name's Rock Russell. We live just twenty-one seventy Eden Road to Severo Road. And then my grandparents own all to the west of this property. Chuck and Ray Clemens, to give you an idea. I don't have any petition against this coming in. The only concern I have is the traffic on Eden Road with Red Bud. That road is no good to begin with because it's just pure sand. And then also with the high water table as well. If they just limit to if, and he answered the question that I was concerned about was you know, strictly seed. I don't have any desire or want to have any retail of chemicals in that area due to that high water table area. That's my only concern.
Thank you.
Yep.
I I would just echo that. I understand a lot of fuel, chemical fertilizer, that that would just why I asked that question. If it's just gonna be dry seed and, you know, in bags or in big totes inside a building, probably pretty bad. So would that be reflected in the, is that reflected in the application? That it's it's basically just, you know, dry seed? And I don't want necessarily limiting to that, I just wanna know upfront, if you're just talking dry seed, totes and bags, you know, no chemical, no fertilizer, no fuel, so.
The the application says sell seed to farmers for the use in ag.
And and other ag products? No, it just says sell seeds to farmers for the use in ag. Sell seed.
Our staff report, the findings says the other ag.
Right, I remember that somewhere.
I I put that in there as just in the event that, you know, there was, the applicant may have like some other things to sell in the future, but I said, I don't.
If that's not part of the application, how can we add that? If it wasn't, if the if the application was for dry seed as an example, how can we just arbitrarily add in other ag products? And maybe we can, I don't know, I'm just asking the question.
Could, but it's just, I'm just saying it says. It's up to you. I mean, if I mean, if the applicant has already said he's he's only gonna be doing seed.
I would, for me personally, I mean, I would wanna follow the application fairly close. You know, I mean, if you guys are like, really, if you wanna sell other ag products in time, then you know, that'd be a great time to kind of expand on that. But if really, if it's truly just gonna be dry seed, then and if that's what the application says, I would wanna, I would wanna, you know, stick with what the application says versus, you know, arbitrarily adding other things that might create topics down the road. Fertilizer, chemical, you know, fuel.
And and board, if I'm out to lunch on this, somebody else just.
No, I agree. I can't count, I agree.
I agree, because we look at the other retailers selling seed. You know, others, you know, some sell just seed, but some branch out into fertilizer or pesticide options, you know. So we were just, you know, with the sensitive groundwater issue there. I think that's what we're just trying to make sure we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's here.
I I think that I think I would be comfortable, I mean, the application says sell seed to farmers for the use in ag. If we could go back to the background and findings and just simply strike other ag-related products.
Okay, so the way that this works is the condition that you if you don't, if you just want to say seed-related, then that's then you would say that as the condition of approval. I wouldn't have to go back and strike through anything on here. You would just make that as a condition of approval, just say it's seed only.
Do you guys want more than seed in there? I I mean, I don't want to be the witness here or anything, but is is that is that would that be your desire in time to sell surfactant and, you know, two-four D and just, you know, whatever. You know, two four D and just, you know, whatever else the guys might want, or?
So I bought Jim Curtis out, they're the applicator, and I have a shed on the airport where I could put chemicals in.
Okay.
And and I sell chemicals out of there.
Okay.
Um, so that shed, um, I have containment in that shed at on the airport. The existing shed that's on Mark's property, it 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 would not meet the Kansas Department of Ag Code to sell chemicals out of.
Right.
And I think by the the map, the flood map, to put another building there would be in the flood zone. So to add another building to that property to potentially do that would probably be out of question.
That that helps, you've got a spot for other chemical if you if you wanted to do that. Yeah, I would, I would agree with you then, Tim, we wanna just, uh, just. Martin, you know, just strike that other ag-related products, this, you know, applicant is propose, is proposing, uh, retail sale of seed, uh, for area farmers. Pretty simple.
Just put that in our.
Pretendation.
Pretend the motions in the motions.
And that would be in the motion if, uh.
I, you just say it's seed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
At the risk of more questions, what about seed treatments? An acumen on soybeans, you know, biological product, but what about fungicides?
So Mustang seed, they have all their seed pre-treated at the facility and all.
Okay.
So when it's delivered in bulk, it's already.
Okay.
We won't have a seed treatment.
So bulk seed, would you put up separate bins and?
No bins, it it all come in bags, bags ready.
Bulk bags or?
Or hard sides or like a big bulk.
Okay.
And normally when it's treated, the second we get it, we give it to the farmer.
Yeah.
Cause there's like basically like a shelf life on it.
Yeah, for sure.
So I mean, it won't be around more than.
Okay. In and out?
Yeah, in and out, basically.
Got it, perfect.
More or less, this is gonna be a shed for me, so I don't have to deliver it from Sonica.
Okay.
Down here, Mustang can deliver it straight over, that way it's easier to go and deliver it.
Okay, appreciate the clarification.
And so I think six months out of your, the one. Another six, so be stuff coming in.
Sure.
I'd like to make a motion, can I do?
Close the public.
Oh, close the public.
Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak?
Get in there.
If not, we'll close the comments from the public.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve CUP twenty five dash oh three. Um, with the amendment that it is for a retail sale of seed.
Okay.
Period.
Do you want the one, number one through three recommendations to attack as well?
Oh, yeah, let me get that. And I would accept, uh, number one, obviously, number two, we need to have an address there. Oh, number three, wanna make sure that there is an approved, uh, permit for the septic system.
Yeah.
That would be appropriate, right, Tim?
You're right, and technically, the word status does confirm that it would be approved, so confirm that there, the status means. Check to make sure that there's an application or an approved application.
And and fourth, I would like to add that there was an approved building permit for the buildings. So that we know that their setbacks are, setbacks are appropriate.
And then Martin, on one, did you wanna, uh, strike the words and other ag-related products on item one?
That'll, that'll just pee.
That is even with the.
That's just in with the.
With the.
That's with.
With lumber already on.
Yeah.
It's it's come out, yeah, that's not, that's not in that.
That was just stat, that was just stat work.
That was just my stat work.
Yeah.
That was just that.
That was my stat work.
I think I clarified that when I said.
Yeah.
Retail seed only.
Yeah, and you, what'd you say for adding, you wanted to add?
I'm gonna add, uh, to verify the building permit for the construction of the buildings.
And that went through me, so yeah, I can, I can vouch for that too.
Of existing buildings.
Of existing buildings?
Yeah.
That would be my motion.
Seconded. It's approved and seconded to. Okay, it's been approved and seconded to approve the CUP twenty five dash oh three with staff recommendations, one. Two, three, with an addition of verifying the building permit of existing buildings and this second edition of retail s- seed sale only. Is there, all in favor, please raise your right hand.
Second.
Yes, sorry, second, is there a second?
Oh, he did it.
Oh, second, yes, second.
He did.
All in favor, please raise your right hand. All close, same sign, motion passed, the CUP twenty five dash oh three is approved. You.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, just to check who went in that.
These were vouches. That we will move on to.
Molebit sense. I don't know if we have.
We're just doing miscellaneous.
It's just gonna be miscellaneous, I'm gonna, I'm gonna follow up with you guys on a couple of things, uh, you talked about. Language, uh, we've spoken with both county council, uh, and the, our other attorney about this, that that. The language, uh, regarding, uh, no submission of an application for alternative energies until regulations has been amended, and the wording that you were. Alluding to, exactly, uh, cannot be included.
Why is that?
Reasoning is because it would violate the spirit and intent of due process for an applicant for a, for a land use case. And so anybody can apply anything at any time, and we have to hear, we have to, you gotta hear. And.
That feels like it's getting rammed down our throat again.
Well, so why, so why did council allow us to pass moratorium, to your moratorium, is that even legal?
We passed it to a moratorium.
It's legal, everybody, everybody does it, but this is what, this is the second part of what I was going to tell you, is that it is.
Based on what I've told you in the previous meetings, you can have individual moratoriums, so if we get real close to the end of. That's more four years from now. Right, July first of twenty twenty six. If you aren't confident that, you know, there's that, we don't have everything addressed that you want to have addressed, then whatever, whatever. Whichever of those alternative energy uses that you, you know, that we haven't addressed yet, can have a separate moratorium, each one.
For, can they have, can it just be a blanket moratorium, kinda like this last one, it was for.
You can do an extend over.
Solar and any other unknown.
You can extend it, the the one that's existing now, you can e- extend another, my understanding is that at least another six months. So it's past July first of next year, can be extended six months, so.
So then after that, we can't blanket, we have to moratorium by individual.
Individual, yeah.
If we decide to moratorium, obviously.
Yeah, yeah, if that's, if you, if you don't feel comfortable that you have addressed everything that you need to address, then you can address it. Through that moratorium that, for that individual who wants, so like, let's say you haven't addressed solar yet, then, uh, and everything else is fine, and you would just say, I, we recommend. A moratorium on solar for a, another year or two, whatever you wanna put on.
And when, when were those conversations had held with council?
I don't know, it was like a couple of weeks, it was like a few weeks ago.
And is that part of the public record?
This is something that we, that's, that's attorney-client privilege, that's considered attorney-client privilege, this is because it's about policy.
And that's where I was gonna go, it it feels like it's policy, not law.
Well, it's, it's, well, it is, it would, it would be violating the spirit and intent. Of an applicant's right to submit an application. You're, because you're an advisory board, that's the other thing, as I said, is you're an advisory board. You're, you know, ultimately, it comes down to what, you know, the county commission being the final approval of something, so you're the advisory board. And, you know, it's up to you to, you know, if you hear an application. And you don't want to, you know, let's say there's an application in front of you, you've gotta listen to them, you've gotta, you've gotta consider it, whether there's. Whether it's addressed in the regulations or not. That's, at that point, you would have it out there. But, uh, you know, like I say, it's, that's, this has been confirmed from a couple of. Couple of individuals.
If that's true, if that's true, and again, I'm just trying to logic this through, thinking about what we went through a year ago, if that's true. And why were we not able to, in that application process, why were we not able to just simply, uh, reject that application? Because it was incomplete, inaccurate, full of ambiguities and incorrectness, was not, in other words, was not, in in Martin's words, a complete or accurate application. In that particular case, we asked about that and said, this is not a good application, that's jacked up from A to Z, and it's pretty.
Because.
Inexcusable, let me, why can't we just simply send this back, let them get it right, we'll take our time, we'll get through and do it, do it right, do it well.
Because.
We're told, no, we only have three choices, you either approve it, or you deny it, or you do a two-year, when you say two-year moratorium while we study it more. And so we chose the two-year moratorium while we study it more, and then commissioners went ahead and proved it anyway, but. But we were told those were our only three choices, we had no other choices, so I'm just trying to, it has that against this conversation where we're told. We absolutely have to hear every application, and then once we do, we can decide what we're gonna do with it, but we did not have that opportunity to decide what to do with it. We only had three choices, an approval was pretty spicy, denying was pretty spicy, and and as a group, we decided that we wanted to. Study it for a couple more years, and then of course, the commission went against it, and that's, that's history, but I'm just trying to figure out. Um, when someone makes one of these applications for hydrogen, maybe as an example, just hypothetical, somebody makes an application for hydrogen. If we're really not ready to hear it, but they, their attorneys fill out the application, they push it through, we have to hear it. Will we then be locked down to three choices, approve it, deny it, or do a two-year moratorium while we study it more? Will those be our only three choices, or would we have the ability to say, this application is as jacked up as the wind one? We're, we're gonna just send it back, or would that basically be, um, denying? Would that just simply be denying?
You would say, you would say, you would say, you would recommend, the third option would not be, the the, would be a moratorium, but it would be probably also. You could do a, you, I believe that at that particular recommendation, that's, that particular third option that you're talking about was. Uh, approve, recommend approval, uh, or look at a two-year moratorium, that was the third option. And or approve the, the current, uh, the current application and submit a two-year moratorium. Or, you know, it was like the, the third was, I can't remember what it was exactly.
Yeah, third, the the three options were deny it, approve it, or do a two-year moratorium, that, that was the three options, which aren't bad, I mean, that's pretty normal, pretty normal thing, or table it or whatever.
Yeah.
Um, but I just, I'm just trying to understand, um, you know, hydrogen is there, they're, you know, thumping the ground and trying, they're already starting kinda testing.
Right.
Um, if it becomes, you know, a thing, kinda like the wind did, you know, how do we, how do we be ahead of that curve where we don't. Get in the position we were in last time, cause like Martin said, it felt like that was, uh, there was something driving that. Um, and nobody could really figure out what the urgency was to get it done, uh, before, you know, but even before the general election, you know, I mean, it was, it was totally illogical. Uh, Wilson had been, uh, elected as commissioner, nobody's running against him, so he's definitely gonna be in. Uh, chambering was going off, it would make, it'd be totally logical to wait till the new guy gets on so he can weigh in on it, cause he's gonna have to administer the project if it goes through. Also, the general election wasn't done, so we didn't know if the Democrats might all get in, and there might be trillions more dollars, we might, we might bank on it. Or Republicans might all get in and the whole thing might go away and it'll all be for naught, and so the sense that Martin mentioned, I think, a lot of the board felt was like, why are we. Pushing this so hard when, uh, there was every logic and common sense to just slow it down, study it some more, um, see what the elections do. And and make sure that we make a, a really good decision versus a really fast decision, so I'm just trying to figure out, how do we, um, mitigate that? Well, before the next situation comes up, which I may not be alive when the next comes up, who knows, but does that make sense?
Yeah.
Is that, is that fair?
It makes sense, but it's just to kinda remind you guys of what, you as an advisory board, you get a, an application, you get information from me. Uh, I mentioned in there, like, let's say, the, uh, items like. Road maintenance agreement, island payments, all that kind of thing.
Mm-hmm.
Doesn't matter. What condition, what state those agreements are in when they come to you, it does not matter. All that matters, all that you look at with agreements, when you, this isn't for the future, when you get stuff like, you might, you might not, I don't know, you might have to do a whole different thing. But land use, if you, no, you look at, you ask yourself. Is the applicant willing to enter into an agreement with the county, consistent with other counties, that's all you look at. If they're not willing to enter into that agreement, and the staff says they're not entering into an agreement, or this kinda looks, the details of that agreement. Is not something that you have authority to, to, to debate, it's just, that's the way it is, your bylaws dictate that you stick to. The, 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 uh, the application in front of you.
The golden factors and land.
Yes, yes. So, I mean, I, I know that's. I mean, it doesn't, I know that some people, that's, that doesn't sit too well, but I mean, that's just the way it is, unless we're, unless you were a, you know, what they call a metropolitan planning organization. Which is a standalone, uh, uh, basically, it's, it's separate from the governing body. It's its own, you know, board that has, you know, it's, it's elected by, you know, there, there's elected officials, I think, or appointed by the governor or whoever. That have overseas regional, you know, like, let's say, transportation planning and things like that. Then you start getting into the nuts and bolts, but you, you're just an advisory board, you don't, you don't enact policy. And so that there are, are planning commissions east of, east of us, that are in urban counties, they're classified as urban counties, and they can do that, but we can't.
I I have just a follow-up question, uh, this, this item brought up tonight was, was not listed and you brought it in on miscellaneous, which is fine. Uh, can anybody bring things up on miscellaneous, or is that a staff only?
Well, that's, miscellaneous is typically a staff thing, that's something that I put in there to update you on. Uh, and the other, the second thing, uh, is I think that, James, you had asked about. At the last meeting about, uh. Written approval from Roden Bridge on entrances for certain things, and, uh, that was, uh, I got with Martin Tannenhill, and he said. The way it usually works is Roden Bridge, you know, provides me with an approval of an entrance per a building permit. So they will usually have an island issue of building permit unless Martin gives me a, something in writing.
So there will be an email from him that he suspected, uh.
He's gonna.
Yarmish, uh, carpenter.
Yeah. Right, right, they're gonna, cause he, the, where they put their entrance is gonna dictate what address they get. And so that's why, and so he has to let me know like what, you know, where that's, so. Before I issue a, a permit, so that's, just to kinda let you know.
Is the same true for townships, when we, a lot of towns in Patshah said, hey, we want a letter from the township, that they're good with what you're doing?
Township is different, township, you can require. Township is different, township you can require uh as a board, you can, you can say, hey, look, we need something in writing, because we've done that before. We used to have a a policy and still do, yeah, where. Uh before I issue a building permit on a dirt road, if somebody has to make improvements, you know, like the gravel in. Uh before I issue a permit, they have to enter into an agreement with the township. And so that's still in place, and so that would be something that you all could dictate, you know, that's. As far as the Roden Bridge end of it, the the roads that are maintained by the county, we've already pretty much got that covered in-house.
So so for us to, so just make sure I understand what I think I'm hearing. For us to ask for Martin, for Martin's approval, an email from Martin, a letter from Martin, whatever, that's actually redundant.
Right.
That's already built into.
It's already.
Building system, yeah.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, whereas with the the townships, it's harder to do because I've gotta get in touch with them, and they have to get their board together and say, okay, this is.
Okay, thank you for that verification, that helps.
Okay, and that's that's all I had.
I'd like to circle back to Commissioner Barrett's uh piece of paper.
Okay.
That we had sent.
Yeah, I got it.
I I I wanna look at it, if I may.
Yeah.
And I think this is dealing with the regulation, right? So. Until such time that these uses, rules, regulations are fully completed and finalized. In the DK zoning and code. But you just said. If they come in tomorrow and submit an application, we have to hear it, is that correct?
That's 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 basically.
So then it doesn't, the regulations don't have to be fully completed.
We don't even have to have any.
Don't even have to have any, but we have to hear it. It's what I just heard.
That's what I heard too.
So, I mean, we agreed to this, that we needed to be fully completed and finalized, the regulations. But now attorney-client privilege is saying that. If they walk in the door with an application, we have to hear it, is that?
That's that's correct, and you have the option of.
Of denying.
Of denying, you know.
So, Tim, how would? I I won't speak for the board, I'll speak only for Martin, how would Martin get on the agenda for planning and zoning? That the words complete and accurate application. Would only be accepted?
Not following you.
Okay. Um. Sometimes an application is not completed. Or it's accurate, there's an error on it.
If it comes before you, uh-huh, it's complete, the complete application by definition, by definition, is the form.
Yeah.
This form filled out. Fill out, sign. And uh the fee and the plan.
Okay, complete and accurate, accurate.
Okay. Okay.
I- i- is there a way that we can get that into our regulations, that an application be complete, which you kind of detailed that? And added the word accurate?
I believe that, yeah, I'll have to check, but uh chapter fourteen, or article fourteen of our zoning code. Under the uh plan review, I think it's mentioned something like that, something to that effect.
Okay, well, if it if it's in there. Then 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 we're good, but I guess I'd like to make sure.
I just, I I I.
I can ensure that the application is complete and accurate, so there's not any misinformation.
I can check and see.
Okay.
And see what if what the wording is on that, but it's, let you know.
Okay.
But next month, uh what I'm gonna do is, we've got one case coming in front of you, another CUP. Uh shouldn't be too difficult, um the uh, but I'm gonna spend time, I I promised you, October would be when I would bring you. It's kind of what I found on hydrogen. And I've been doing research on that from other counties, and I'll bring you all that information, I'll have that all of that. In your packets when I send it next month. You can look at, uh it's not. It's not gonna be complicated, I'm not gonna hit you with a bunch of stuff to review or anything, it's just. Uh I'm gonna, I'm, I'll need direction from you all as to how you want a resolution to for for hydrogen. How we want to address it, because you have. And you'll, we'll, I'll get into this next month, but I said, there's two ways we can approach it. Uh we can either have. There's the issue of wells, which I've already determined are allowed by right. Uh in our regulations for hydrogen, so it would be a matter of addressing that. And hydrogen energy facilities, two different things. So hydrogen wells versus, you know, different than, uh from what I've seen, natural gas wells versus hydrogen energy-producing facilities. Uh and so those are gonna be two different things, we're gonna, you know, I'll 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 come to you with some options for wording for the wells. Because we already have in our chapter one, I think it's chapter article two or three, or whatever it is, uh on the ag districts. Uh such wells are determined to be allowed by right, and also with regard to wells, all wells, not just hydrogen, but also oil and gas. Uh you're limited as to what you can. Put in there, uh limited as to how you can regulate, because at the local level, because those are regulated by Kansas Commerce Commission. So uh I'll come, I'll bring you some information, some wording on that, addressing the wells. Potential uh amendment to our regulation to address hydrogen wells. And also uh discuss uh some wording for hydrogen energy facilities. Based on what I've been able to, yeah.
And then we just follow up next time on Martin's question, maybe just a tiny thing, but you know, is that word accurate?
That one is. Yeah.
Yeah, this word is accurate, can can you see if that's in there?
That could, yeah, and if it's not, we can add it, I mean, that's that's something, you know, I mean, and again, there's there's, accurate's a relative term, you get an attorney on it, and they'll say, yeah, it's accurate.
Like the definition of the word is still open, so.
But that's one of the reasons that I tried, and I won't keep you any longer, but I said, it's just, that's one of the reasons that, if you remember, a couple of years ago, we changed. The requirements uh for site plans and metals. Uh to reflect, you know, how intense the use is, and so they have to be a lot more accurate, or. Uh complicated it is, you know, and so that's, you know, so if it's an industrial or heavy commercial type uh facility. They've gotta actually go in and uh. Do it like like what they did here and submit a site plan like this, you know, that's drawn out professionally, you know. And so the, so the burden of proof for the uh uh depending on what type of use you have is gonna dictate like. You know, and it still has to be accurate, I'm not saying so, but we we do allow for some hand-drawn stuff, but it has to be accurate, and I emphasize people. And there's there's been several that I have received from people. That I've rejected, and said, in fact, the one that you're gonna be hearing next month, I rejected their plan because it was not, you know, it's not legible. So I said, just give me something, you know, that I can read, so anyway, but that's it. That's all I have.
I had one follow-up from your response earlier, you mentioned bylaws. Does anybody have a copy of the bylaws that I didn't receive a copy of the?
I can get you a, I can get you a P uh.
Okay.
Copy of it, um I can email it to you guys. My, you know, on that topic, my book is so outdated. A decade old or two decades old. Probably start by just throwing a lot of stuff away, but. But it makes sense at some point, and maybe everybody does have, except me, does have a, you know, a new current book.
It is, everybody's got, like, you should have gotten one too.
This is the most current I've got.
Yeah, it was one that we updated, the zoning code and the the comprehensive plan, and subdivision regulations were all updated about twenty twenty-three.
Okay, so that's it.
You want to have a motion on the adjournment? Let's move this section to the adjournment meeting, all paid, raise your hand.